July 14th, the meeting of Atwater City Council is at order. We're going to start with the invocation by Ben Perez, followed by, followed by the pledge of allegiance from the city manager.
Okay, let's pray. Differently, Father, Lord, I thank you for this day. I thank you for all the things you have done and things you will do. Lord, I pray that you put a hedge of protection over this meeting, Lord. Help every ward to be honored and glorified to your name, Lord, and help us to keep giving you the honor and glory in all that you do. Lord, keep this meeting safe. Let, uh, nothing happen, bad happen in this meeting. Lord, I pray that you watch over us in a mighty way, Lord. In your precious name, I pray.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Ambries?
Here.
Cale? Raymond?
Here.
Rochester?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
We have a court.
Do we have any subsequent need items?
Mayor, there are none.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as posted?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Where were we? Oh, we were doing the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Lisa made the motion. We need a second.
Second.
Motion by Rochester, second by Ambries. Rochester?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So our first item this evening is a presentation where we are going to give the oath of office to Police Sergeant Robert Vargas. Officer, Sergeant Vargas, you'll come forward here with the chief and with the city clerk.
Do you, Robert Vargas, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So Sergeant Vargas has been with the department for over 20 years, and he's done a little bit of everything. Uh, he's been a reserve here, he's been an officer here. He was a school resource officer, he was a detective, uh, he's one of our primary, uh, evidence collection texts that comes out anytime we have a major crime, and he does an excellent job at everything he does. Uh, he's been a field training officer here for a long time too, and got a lot of people in this room as, as well as other people that aren't here that he's trained. And, uh, we felt like he was a really good, solid choice to continue that leadership in a supervisory role. So we're very happy to have Robert as sergeant. We look forward to being a sergeant for a long time. Lieutenant Nowetski's worked with him for many, many years, so I'm gonna let him say a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Vargas. He's committed himself here, uh, for a better part of 20 years. Uh, it's nice to see that legacy employees are recognized, and he's put in a lot of work over the years. He's done what he's been asked to do, and uh, he's excited with the position. So, uh, it's a challenge, but I think he's up to it, and I know he cares about the community, and that's first and foremost.
Who's gonna pin your badge?
I appreciate everybody coming out for this. Um, it is a momentous occasion for me, something I've been able to achieve after many years of hard work and dedication. Um, I'd like to thank not only the members of my team, but the department as a whole, and most of all, I would like to thank Lieutenant Nowetski and Chief McKeachan. Uh, they have been a tremendous, um, support to my guidance and ability to, to become a sergeant, and they've been tremendous mentors, um, and I couldn't have done it without them and their support.
We have a second presentation this evening, a proclamation of recognition to Shante Dobbins of Exhortation to Unity, and Councilmember Rochester is going to make the presentation.
Okay, so I just recently became, um, acquainted with the Dobbins family, and, um, I'm so happy that I did. They do such amazing work. They're in District Two, um, providing transportation services, homes for various populations, also brown bag lunches, um, for our homeless population. And so, they do a lot of amazing things for, uh, the residents of our community, and I thought that it would only be fitting to honor them for all of the work that they do. This is particularly for Shante. Um, so I'm gonna read the proclamation, so stay with me. We'll take some water breaks, but, um, just, just hang out. Whereas Shante Lynette Dobbins, a lifelong resident of Atwater, California, has demonstrated extraordinary dedication to her community through decades of service, innovation, and compassion. And whereas Ms. Dobbins carries forward the proud legacy of the Cooksey family, early founders of the Cookseyville community in Atwater, and has continued that legacy through entrepreneurship and public service. And whereas inspired by her upbringing and strong family values, Ms. Dobbins became a leader in the field of residential care, assuming administrative leadership of Happy Haven Guest Homes, and later founding CND's Guest Homes Incorporated, providing compassionate care for individuals with special needs. And whereas in 2014, Ms. Dobbins established the Haven Adult Developmental Program, a community-based day program, and later expanded services to include transportation through Dobbins Transportation Incorporated, offering non-emergency medical transportation across the region. And whereas in 2022, Ms. Dobbins founded Ohana Social Recreation Incorporated, promoting inclusion and enriching the lives of individuals with developmental disabilities through recreational outings. And whereas Ms. Dobbins currently leads four women-owned businesses, and employs over 100 Merced County residents, contributing significantly to the region's economy and quality of life. And whereas she also co-founded the nonprofit Exhortation to Unity to address food insecurity, homelessness, and mental health, launching outreach efforts such as the Brown Bag Lunch, BBL, program to serve vulnerable populations. And whereas Ms. Dobbins continues to lead with faith, purpose, and a vision for a better future, and is currently working to establish the Shante Lynette Dobbins Legacy Center to further expand her impact in the community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that the City of Atwater hereby recognizes and honors Shante Lynette Dobbins for her remarkable achievements, enduring commitment to service, and inspirational leadership. Her contributions have touched countless lives, and her work continues to be a source of pride and progress for the City of Atwater and Merce County. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Now I'm gonna let you say a few words.
Thank you so much, and thank you for recognizing my sister-in-law and the amazing work that she does. Um, she is a quiet giant, but loves Atwater dearly, and wants to give to the developmentally disabled, and those who are in need, and her heart just goes out. So, thank you so much for recognizing her. Um, we appreciate it more than you even
Well, we are now on to the consent calendar.
Background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If a council member requests separate discussion on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Is there any public comment regarding this consent calendar?
Uh, good evening. Adam Reed. Uh, I like the moves that the city's making on updating the municipal code, uh, for parking standards. It's something that's been needed for a long time. I've talked about it over the years. Um, and it's great, and this, uh, I think though that it needs a little bit of a tweak, uh, 'cause something that I've constantly, uh, not battled, but, uh, always, uh, have to get clarification on and stuff, uh, is the parking space sizes. Um, in the, in the code, um, it references that the parking sizes will be set by the, I forgot what it calls it, but it's not the right, it's like engineered City of Atwater standards for engineered structures. Uh, so we've got City of Atwater standards and specifications, but they, they call out a, a 20-foot by, uh, nine-foot wide, 20-foot deep, but there's a detail in there that shows that, uh, an example of a parking space, and it's eight and a half by 20. So there's a little bit of contradiction there, but the big one is we've never had a clear direction on what the size of compact parking space is. So I'm just, uh, it's just, you know, if, if we can make sure we get that updated, uh, you know, the acceptable size from the city engineers' office, I checked right before I got here, because every time I do a design, I've got, I, I double-check with them. But 16 by eights, that's accepted standard for a compact size stall. So if we can just make sure we get that in there, just so that way it's, it's just clear. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got, um, a couple of things. Let's see here. In the warrant list, and I'm sure nobody's read, um, check number 28340, uh, this is going to Dunn Building, Inc., and it's for the Cornet Building or Number Two Civic Center. Um, and it, uh, references project retention, whatever that means. Eighty-three thousand, eighty-three thousand, eight hundred, forty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. And the other one is, uh, check 28352, coming out of the Measure B funds, going to Axon Enterprise, Inc., for the tune of thirty-eight thousand, nine-hundred, thirty-five dollars and two cents. So I'd like to kind of find out just what in the world are we spending that kind of money on. And lastly, uh, item number eight of the consent calendar, adoption of the ordinance approving, uh, an amendment to the development agreement between the City of Atwater and Ferrari Ranch. Uh, just to let you know, uh, this last week, I had a very, very good meeting with Mr. O'Connor, and, uh, we discussed Ferrari Ranch. And, uh, this is, uh, something I'm particularly interested in, so, uh, all I'm asking for is the details of what we're gonna do, uh, with that particular, uh, item.
Okay. Uh, with regard to item seven, as this item is now on the consent calendar for a second reading, I am not required to leave the room. Adam Clerk, please record my vote on the consent calendar as yes for all items except number seven. Are there any items on the consent calendar for a council would like to remove for separate discussion and possible action?
I have a couple of items, Mayor. From the warrants list, I also had marked check number 28340, um, for ARPA funds being utilized for project retention. And I had check number 28, I believe it's 357. Um, it's particularly for the gas tax street improvement. Some questions I had, um, around those expenditures.
Are you asking for that to be pulled, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. So we will vote on items... So we'll pull the, we'll pull the warrants off, right? Item one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I, I also wanted to ensure that we do discuss the parking sp- space widths, to ensure that that's incorporated in. And then for number eight, just a further explanation on Ferrari Ranch.
So you can pull it, or you can just, if there's a brief explanation?
Uh, sure. So at the last council meeting, um, I presented on this topic for Ferrari Ranch, and there's, uh, one tweak, uh, well, I presented at the Planning Commission meeting. Uh, so there's one tweak with this, and it's very small. Um, it deals with the responsibility of, um, building the stormwater sewer and water improvements, um, along green sands between, um, Bu Hack Road and Ger Road. Uh, we have about three million dollars in, uh, federal funds that, um, is coming to us that we want to ensure gets used first, and, um, to clarify that the developer is responsible for those sort of improvements, um, after we, um, we, we get the federal funds. So it's just a way to maximize efficiency for that. That's the only change for that. And then, um, you were asking about the other checks? Um, oh, the parking, yes. So the, the parking specifications, um, are separate from the parking ordinance. That's, uh, proposed to be amended here. Um, certainly, we can bring back the specifications and look at those and get those updated as well separately. Um, so we can start working on that.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I, so with regard to the warrants, did you want me to ask the questions that I have now about the warrants, or?
We're gonna pull the warrants separately, and we're gonna vote on the other items separately. So let's vote on items two through eight.
I'll make a motion that we approve as amended.
Motion by Cale, second by Raymond. Rochester?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes, except for item seven.
Yes. Motion passes.
Okay, so now we're back to item one, the warrants.
Um, I'm going to ask our, our Public Works Director, Justin Vincent, um, to give information about check 28340, the Dunn Building Project Retention, um, as well as 28357, the, uh, the, the gas tax item.
So the first one for DGN Build, so when the project's going along, when they invoice us, we keep 5% of retention throughout the whole project on every invoice until the project's completed. Then when the project's completed, and went for a notice of completion last council meeting, then we release the retention back to the contractor so he can finish paying out the subs. That's why it's 5% retention on the whole project. They've already done the work. We just release it once we find the work acceptable. And then the other one is at Boot Barn, the other check? Yeah, so those are, are employees that work in the gas tax, and that's just PPE, their boots.
So my conversation with, um, our city manager is essentially that I don't feel that the way that we're spending the ARPA funds are actually, um, for what those funds were given to cities, um, I don't think that that was the intention when, when these funds were given to cities for us to make improvements to our buildings. I thought that it was to help with local businesses and, and to make them whole again. So that's really my issue with the ARPA expenditure, not so much, um, you know, what is it, but more that I just don't agree with the appropriation.
Yeah, and, and the issue with that is, that's the account that was approved to do the work. Um, unless you wanna, Anna, I don't even know if you could do a budget amendment, or try to transfer it to general fund. I'm not even sure if you could do that
We can look into that at the council's pleasure.
And I'm not sure if it was approved by the council previously for the funds to be, and so I would just say that I, I don't agree with it, and that's my issue with it. And I just wanted to say that here, um, for the public. Uh, and the other thing is, when I'm reading the code section for the California Streets and Highways Code, I'm not seeing where there's an allowance for us to use those funds for, um, uniforms for staff. It, the way that I read it, it seems that it's specific for, um, well, I mean, it's very long, and I, and I've gone through it, and I don't want to bore everyone with it here, but I'm just saying that I, I didn't read uniforms in there.
Yeah, we, we can go back and verify. Um, we'll still pay, we can still pay the vendor, and then if we need to do a credit coding, we can.
Okay.
And I'll, and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mayor, if I may, from the beginning, I actually agree with, uh, Councilmember Rochester, because I think a lot of the ARPA funds were spent, um, on the city rather than the public, so I just wanted to support her with that. But it was approved by the previous council.
I'd like to just clarify, um, in case, once we get to a motion on this, um, there are a lot of other items on the warrant list, and, um, so I just wanted to see if there's any disagreement to the rest of those items, or if, if there's gonna be like, um, like a no vote on any particular items or anything like that, if you could clarify that, um, as part of any motion that's made. Thank you.
Okay. Done? Can, uh, have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve it, and if it's found and we go against what we said, we originally said we're going to pay out of, then we just go out of the general
Motion by Cale, second by Raymond. Cale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we're at the end of the consent calendar. Now we are on to public hearings, the first one being confirming the engineers' reports and ordering the annual levy for the lighting and drainage and landscape maintenance assessment districts for fiscal year 2025-26. Open the public hearing, and, uh, the city manager's gonna give us a report first.
Um, just a simple report on this. Uh, this is an item that was discussed at the last council meeting as well. Um, this is a required second step, uh, for that process. This is an annual process that we have to go through for the landscape maintenance assessment districts and lighting and drainage districts, um, to have, um, the engineer review those amounts and make sure that they're accurate, um, for the levies.
Council have any questions? Seeing none. Is there any public comment on this item? I did. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ambry, I'm sorry, motion by Raymond, second by Ambries. Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Raymond?
No.
Rochester?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, now we're onto item 10, accepting the water meter installation project as complete. Justin is going to give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So during this project, we installed 2,556 meters. There still is a few hundred meters installations that weren't included in the project, but staff is installing them within the next three months. They weren't included in the original contract because the city still has to locate the valves of where the meters are going to be at. Staff is also still programming meters that were installed during the project, so if you don't see meter readings on your bill yet, it's because we're out there still programming them. We have to program them, send the information to finance, and then finance has to input it into our billing software. We're projecting that we'll be done with that within two months. We're also projecting that the customer portal for the water meter software will be up and running by September. It should have already been done, but we had to do an upgrade to our billing software, so the meter software had to wait until that was completed for us to even start that. But if there's any residents that have questions, or, you know, worried how much usage they have, like a quarter way through the month, midway through the month, they can call Public Works, we can see how much they're using. We just don't have the portal ready yet for the customers. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? I have a question or two here.
Yeah.
So charges, you won't start charging by the meter until all the meters throughout the city are?
No, they'll be charged, once we program it and it goes into finance, they'll be charged. There's already 5,000 or close to 6,000 houses that are already getting charged.
Okay, okay. And then this came up the other day, how are the meters read?
So we don't actually physically read the meters besides about 300 older commercial meters. The meter has a wire that plugs into a transmitter. The transmitter sends a signal to our base tower every three hours, and then we get the data from there every night. We can upload it into Springbrook, and that's how we see the consumption. It reads it every hour, but it only sends a signal every three hours.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask a question. So if you notice, if it knows, notices that there is an above-average use, does it notify you guys or notify the person?
So in the software, yes, it'll say, you know, we've noticed water moving every hour, you know, 10 gallons an hour, we think, and it'll flag it as a leak, essentially, yeah.
Great, perfect, thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing nobody come forward, I will close public comment, and we get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Raymond, second by Kale. Raymond?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Alrighty, item 11, adopting the City of Atwater Strategic Plan for 2026 through 2030. City manager is going to give us a report.
Yeah, so we had a strategic plan workshop on May 31st. We had some members of the public attend that, and we went over the, we shared what looked like on the previous plan, what we had, and we put, just to give everyone an idea of what that meeting looked like, we put these giant sticky notes on the walls, and then we invited people to provide their ideas and feedback on six core categories, where we have objectives that we are looking forward to doing in the next five years. Those objectives, we've organized into this new strategic plan, into one-time objectives and ongoing objectives. So the ongoing ones include, for instance, maintaining a 25% reserve in our general fund as well as our Measure B fund. That would, that's something that we're doing every year. Also, you know, just completing the budget and the ongoing things that cities have to do every year, those are ongoing. And we have one-time goals and objectives. Some of them include bringing in new businesses to targeted areas. There's an idea for a dog park, there's an idea for a goal to evaluate hiring an economic development manager, so that's how it's organized, and there's, we still have the six same broad categories of objectives, and they include ensure financial solvency, promote safety, stability, and quality of life, promote transparency through communication, optimize organizational structure, promote economic development, and improve quality of life. And so when we put all those together, it helps us organize, and for the next five years, we have the strategic plan in place that we can accomplish as much as we can. Of course, we have to do the core fundamental ongoing items, but those one-time goals and objectives are also, that's our target, that's what we're hunting after to accomplish, so that we can, you know, take the city to the next level. So there weren't any changes in the mission, the vision, or the core values, those remain intact as the foundation of the document, and we'll be reviewing this at least on an annual basis. We may bring this every six months, but that's the plan and the goal, and I welcome any further comments, or if anyone has any, anything else that they'd like to add, I put the ideas that we had from those giant sticky notes from the public and from the council into this plan. So this plan is longer than it was before, it has a lot of meat to it, but we're very confident that it provides a game plan for us to move the city forward, so really happy about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Does council have any questions?
I would just like to thank you for your work on the project and for incorporating our ideas, and for also including the public in the development and listening to their ideas as well. It's important for us to be transparent and to listen to what our community wants and needs, so thank you.
Is there any public comment on this item?
Just quickly, I just wanted to say, Chris, you did a wonderful job that day. I attended that meeting, and it was very productive, and having an open and frank discussion as there were was really productive, and I applaud you for that, and to bring that back again would be a great idea. The only addition I had an afterthought on was for the sphere of influence and how that might affect those items that we had in the suggestions.
Anybody else?
Good evening, council. The only thing I didn't hear that I would have liked to see in your proposal was hiring on, on-staff engineer. I think that we've had a, some issues with things taking a little too long and a lot of billing going on for quite some time, and that always ends up to the end user, the developer, somebody who's getting permits, and after having a nice meeting with Mr. O'Connor, I'd really look forward to seeing what he can do, and I think if you add in a on-staff engineer, it's going to save the city a bunch of money, and a fresh set of eyes might help a little bit, might consider that.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody's come, well, depends on what, we're talking about the Atwater Strategic Plan. If you have any comment about that?
Okay, there's a person here that had a comment about something that wasn't on the agenda.
That'll be later on.
Is that's later on?
You haven't, you haven't missed it, you haven't missed it. Okay. Okay, so I'm closing public comment. Who would like to make the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Motion by Raymond, second by Rochester. Kale?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 12, discussion and possible direction regarding a vacant commercial building ordinance as requested by city council member Rochester. And our new community development director, John O'Connor, is going to be giving a presentation. Is there a clicker?
No, sorry. I promised you that there was going to be, and there's not.
No, no problem.
So I apologize.
Thank you, council, and thank you to the public. This presentation, the purpose is to give council and public information on what a vacant commercial building ordinance could look like. The second purpose is to request direction on next steps. These types of ordinance aim to prevent blight, protect property values, and ensure public safety by requiring property owners to register vacant properties, maintain them, and secure them against unauthorized access and criminal activity. Sorry, going fast. Some of the pros of a vacant, a vacant commercial building ordinance, vacant properties can quickly deteriorate, leading to a decline in the surrounding neighborhood's appearance and property values. Unsecured vacant buildings can be a hazard, attract vandalism, illegal dumping, even pose risk to children who might enter them. By requiring registration, the city can identify the responsible parties, owners or managers of vacant properties, and hold them accountable for the maintenance and upkeep. So those are the pros. Next one, please. Some of the cons, added regulation. Regulation isn't inherently bad, but it must be smart, targeted, enforceable, and justified. Number two, enforcement can be resource-intensive. It's going to take staff time to develop the ordinance, to enforce it, and to help register folks. We could receive pushback from property owners or legal challenges if this isn't crafted correctly if we decide to move forward. The ordinance may not address underlying economic causes of why the buildings are empty and are causing blight. And the last one, it could be hard to track ownership. Certain buildings could be owned by a variety of different LLCs or properties, and it might be hard to find who actually owns it. Next, please. If we do decide to move forward, there'd be a couple key elements. We'd want to, we'd want to register the buildings. I'm going to go through what other cities have done a little bit about registration, maintenance standards, we'd want to specify information about trash, landscaping, structural upkeep. Security, we'd want to require that the buildings are secured to prevent unauthorized access. Inspections, if we do create something, we'd want to inspect and ensure that there was compliance. Then penalties, making sure that the ordinance could result in fines, fees, or other penalties. Next, please. So we're going to quickly go through five different cities that have similar types of ordinances to give everyone an idea of what this could look like. Next, please. So in Pasadena, they did an ordinance with non-residential buildings, commercial, industrial. Santa Cruz did all vacant buildings, including commercial. Vallejo did commercial and recreational. Richmond, commercial and industrial, and Berkeley just focused on storefronts in their retail section. Next, please. Each, so registration deadlines. So what this means is if we decide to move forward with a vacant building, there's going to be a point in time that the city could require registration. Some cities are doing 90 days, some are doing 30, some are doing immediately after vacancy, and Berkeley's does 180 days. Next, please. Annual fee varies on as low as 500, as high as 900, and there's some variable fees from a couple other, other cities. We didn't, we didn't do a tremendous amount of staff time, but we put enough staff time involved, just to give you a taste of what this could look like. Next, please. So key requirements, the cities are pretty similar. They require a registration process, they allow inspections, and then typically, there's a monitoring period with compliance as well. Next, please. Penalties, they're all fairly similar, fines, liens, civil penalties, escalating fines. This is kind of what the teeth would be of an ordinance. Next, please. So I'm going to quickly go through in these five slides, the decision tree, to look at, do we want to do this? Why would, why would, what would some of the reasons be to do this? So first question is, is vacancy a visible and growing issue in your, in our commercial areas in the city? Maybe yes, maybe no. Next, please. Are vacant commercial properties contributing to blight, crime, or safety hazards? Next, please. To what extent does the city want to prioritize this new program for its staff? This would potentially be under building or code enforcement, so would this be important enough for our community to reprioritize staff time away from standard code enforcement or building projects to look at a program like this? Next one, is there political community support for regulating these types of properties, specifically for the owners? Next. If we decide to move forward, staff would want direction on the scope, we'd want to set registration deadlines, we'd be wanting to determine fees and enforcement measures, basically develop best practices for if we're going to move forward, and then create a staffing plan and a program. Next. If we do decide to adopt the ordinance, we draft the ordinance, we bring it to city council for adoption, monitor outcomes, and then we'd amend it based on feedback from the community and council. So there's four options here. One, direct staff to start the ordinance. Number two, request more information from staff about budget implications, staffing levels, get more information and do more of an analysis. Three, we could do a voluntary registration program, so stick without any teeth. And four, you could choose to monitor vacancy trends and take no action at this time. So comment as community development director, if we go down this road, there may be unintended consequences. The newly adopted strategic plan, item 5.7, specifically states that we should evaluate a vacant commercial building ordinance to incentivize economic development and/or disincentivize blight. We're doing that, so that's a quick, quick adoption of the strategic plan in the next item. However, item 5.1, it recommends that we promote permit streamlining to attract and support business activities within the city. This vacant commercial building ordinance could detract from attracting businesses to stay, build, or come to the city. This type of action would support more regulation. Staff recommends number two, to get more information and details from staff in the future. That's it. Okay, thank you for that presentation. Do we have any questions from the council? Or comments?
I do have a comment, Mayor. I do want to thank you very much, Mr. O'Connor, for the presentation and the information. The reason why I requested for this to be brought forward is because I have myself experienced issues that I've shared with you in the past, before my city council days, in trying to potentially rent a business here in the city, and I never received a phone call back even from the individual who had the property listed. And I never received a phone call back even from the individual who had the property listed, and I tried multiple times. And that kind of tells me that we have some individuals who are investing in our properties here and using our properties as tax write-offs and not being worried about the fact that they're leaving vacant buildings all over our city. We've seen a lot of issues in the city of Merced with vacant buildings catching on fire due to transients going inside the buildings. So I have some concerns about that, and I'm very interested to hear what my colleagues have to say and what potentially our community would have to say about that as well. So that's really the reason why I brought this forward. I'm most interested in hearing what our community has to say, and, and of course, my colleagues. And, and I thank you again for the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Brian, did you have anything? You guys experienced with this in the past?
One concern I'd have is the city has a hard time enforcing regulations that are already in place. So now we're gonna add another one that's gonna potentially hurt businesses, or business owners, because, I mean, I spoke to an individual today that is very thoughtful in his tenants, and he left his business, his building vacant for eight months to find the right one. It was also maintaining it. But I think we need to look at the incentivization rather than punishment, the carrot rather than the stick.
John?
You know, I looked at the building behind City Hall on Cedar and Fifth Street, and it's been, it's like next door to our City Hall, it's been a blight forever. When we decided to purchase the Civic Two building, we attempted to purchase that building and clean it up and fix it up. I think this is needed. I really believe it is needed. Like Mr. Rochester said, there are a lot of people that just own in their building 'cause they have the money, and they're just saying, you know, in ten years, I'll be able to make a hundred thousand dollars off that building. And it's not doing us any good. And I think small businesses would be able, should be able to come in and say, hey, that should be building that, I could use, utilize that. So I think it needs to relift that, and I like option two.
Danny?
I like the idea of a property registration program, especially this way the city actually knows who owns what. It's, it's just, you know, finding, finding the time to have our staff take, take a look at this program is what's, what's definitely dwelling on my mind here. But I'm also born the, for like a vacant building reuse incentive program, you know, maybe waive some, some permit fees in order to help out with improvements. I don't know. I'm, I'm not a realtor nor am I a small business owner, so those are just some of my, my thoughts. Definitely wanna hear from, from the public. I know we, we have some people that have experience out there.
Okay. John, I got a question for you. So for a staffing plan, if we were to go to a full-blown ordinance like these other cities, what kind of staffing would you need? And we know you're already short-staffed, so.
Right now, the department is severely short-staffed. I'm, I'm very concerned for the, for the current applicants that have applied and are currently working through planning, engineering, the building department. I, we would have to evaluate if it should, if this responsibility should sit with code enforcement or if this should sit with the building department. But I'm, I'm also, you know, concerned at the impact that this, this would, would make on building owners that are acting responsibly. I would hate to give, to hurt them or the bad apples they're kind of trying to hide. So right now, we do not have enough staff to create a program, especially that would register every commercial building in town. The reason I asked for number two is to take this more seriously, do more study, and try to create a program that's not just like other cities, but to create a program that would be right for this city. Which I, again, I do not wanna penalize visiting businesses or building owners that are acting.
So if you were gonna do that study, how long do you think it would take you to bring us back, bring something back to us that could act on?
I'd ask for, for two months, to really look at staffing, to look at budget implications, and study meaning in-house. So we're not paying consultants, we're looking at it, and, and then make some recommendations if, if we decide to move forward. Or if, if Council decides to move forward.
Okay. Yeah, I'm more in the favor of the carrot, always, but whether we have funds or not to provide incentives, that's always an issue. And I don't know that using the stick on, you know, the, you need to be selective about using the stick. I would be okay with you coming back with more details after a couple months. Give yourself three or four months if you need it, because we know things always go slower than what is planned, at least in this city.
So you're concerned, Mr. Mayor, that's why if you go with a vacant building, sales tax rebate, we use their money and give it back to them.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was asking earlier, give us some information on it.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I just got out of the hospital and working. Question for Mr. City Attorney, I'm kinda playing devil's advocate a little bit, because I believe it's way too much government overreach. But if you're to look at it with, say, putting the ordinance in place for the out-of-town owners that are kinda slum lords almost, or just there for the tax credit, and then not doing it to locals, is there, is it all or nothing? Can you divvy it up? Or I'm just kinda wondering the legal ramifications.
Yeah, so in order to differentiate or distinguish between those that are local versus out of area, however you wanna define that, you need to be able to articulate a rational basis under the equal protection clause of the Constitution. So it's not a protected class or category, but you still have to be able to articulate for any government discretion, a rational basis to distinguish it. So if you can make the findings that out-of-area property owners are more likely to let the property fall into disrepair, because they don't have anyone local, then you could probably justify it, it seems like a rational basis. The other thing is, in terms of the registration requirement, some city ordinances with the registration requirement require someone, a local contact, to be registered. So there has to be a liaison within so many miles, even if they're an out-of-state corporation that owns it. So there's a couple different ways to address that.
Okay, any other Council comments, questions?
I do have one more. If we are going to go the route of doing a study, I have had a constituent bring to my attention that there's been concerns about also vacant residences within the city and individuals who are purchasing properties and leaving the residences vacant. And there's one residence in particular where there is black water in the pool, and a lot of mosquitoes are, are in that, or around, in the pool around the property, and so it causes an issue there too. So I'm wondering if potentially we could look at that as well, if we are gonna, to opt for option two.
Isn't that already the duties of the code enforcement officer?
If there, if there was a complaint, then that would be their duties, yes.
Okay, so that would fall into the code enforcement for housing.
Well, except there's no registration requirement and inspection requirement as a matter of course with vacant residential property. A vacant, any kind of vacant building ordinance would have a registration or inspection prop, inspection, inspection opportunity as a matter of course, as opposed to a response to complaints only. And if you register, you have to consent to allow the city, if that was the case, if that was the way the city went, they would have the, the rights to inspect the property at least, however, however so often they divine. So it does give the city a little bit more ability to inspect.
So would a registration be any non-owner-occupied building or residence at that point?
Well, it'd be commercial and residential if that's the case. It would not, obviously not include institutional, industrial, but for the most part, it would cover the lion's share of property in the city.
So in, in that case, real quick, because of the staff time, there'd be a cost to the registration, which would be another burden on the business owner or property owner?
Yeah, I don't know of any city, I don't know, John, if you found any that has a program like this that doesn't have a fee associated with the registration, because there is staff time to administer the program.
The ones that I reviewed, all had fees associated with it.
Okay. Before I open up public comment on this, I do wanna say, Kalisa, since she brought up about the green pools, people, people are welcome to call the mosquito abatement district, give them the address of the defending property, they'll come out and take care of it. Nobody wants mosquitoes.
Thank you for that, yes.
Okay, so public comment, does any member of the public have any comments about this potential ordinance?
Good evening, Adam Reed again. Real quick on the mosquitoes and the blight in the backyards and stuff, I've, I think everybody on here, maybe Kalisa doesn't, but over the years, I've talked about my neighbors, and code enforcement has told me multiple times that they have no ability to do anything behind the fence that cannot be seen from public roadway, pools, or trash. And then also mosquito abatement, they, they won't, they'll go and knock on the door, but if they don't answer, they won't do anything, so they've had to come in my backyard and throw stuff into the pool. So the, the penalization for property owners, I, I'm, I'm a property owner, the rents property, and I am very selective, like Brian had mentioned earlier, somebody that he talked to, about who rents my property, and my property has sat vacant, because I wanna make sure I have a good renter in there, but I take care of the property. And so I, on the surface, this sounds like a great idea, but it needs to be more targeted, targeted towards absentee owners that are using low-value properties to shelter 1031 money, or, you know, they're, they're setting it here for a while, and they don't care if, if the property is rented out, and then they're gonna move the money later or use it as tax write-offs. So just please put some thought into that. Something needs to be done. I'd rather see incentives than penalization too. But I'm assuming that, you know, as this goes forward, there'll be some public hearings so we can get more, you know, no sense in getting into, really into the weeds on it, but definitely maybe something, incentives instead of penalization. Thank you.
I, I think what Councilmember Rochester brought up about the vacant homes is a very valid point. You may all recall that there was a vacant house here in town that had been the subject of drug stuff and, I think, some homeless and everything else, and ended up having a major fire there and burned it down. So, you know, that's the kind of thing I think would apply in an ordinance such as this. I know there's a lot of moving parts to this, but, you know, I, I'm concerned, and I think it's a good idea, John, don't get me wrong, I think that this is one of those things where the details are, you know, the thing that needs to be really hammered out and well-thought-out. I think that it can be done so it doesn't give the appearance of government overreach as Brian has brought up. I think that, you know, this can be fashioned so that you can really target where it needs to be targeted. I point to Atwater Boulevard, and I've said this before, and you may have heard me say it, but I'll say it again. People that come to this city and may come off from the south or from the north and come on Atwater Boulevard, they come down that, that particular stretch of road, and when you look at that, you know, if, if I was coming off of that freeway and I came up there thinking I'm gonna come here and start a business and raise a family, buy a house, that kind of thing, and I take one look at Atwater Boulevard and I'm gonna just keep on going and get right back up on the freeway, that is blight with a capital B. And right now, I'm concerned, well, there's lots of places, but where Jax or Better are, up there at Atwater Boulevard and Wenton Way, it's now vacant. I hope that it's gonna be rented out pretty soon, sorry to see it went away. But from there, all the way down to Schaefer, you've got an old gas station, you've got the Creamery building that everybody gripes about, you've got all kinds of stuff up and down there. This is the kind of thing right here that needs to be done, put some teeth to it, and get the people that own these properties, or whoever they are, to do something about it. And if they don't, then we're just, you know, if, if we're not gonna do this, it's just gonna continue to be what it is today. And that's not a winning formula, especially if we're looking to develop and do the things like the strategic plan that Chris put together and what John is talking about. I think that this is, you know, needed, but it needs to be done, you know, with smart, detailed growth ideas.
Good evening again. I second Jim's thought on the, on the Creamery building. That's a building that's been here for who knows how long, right? Well, there's a guy that's been wanting to develop that for how many years now? Approximately four years. Have we helped him out? We have not. I own property across, I'm on my three and a half year on that development. We also have to have incentive programs for all of these properties. Now, I'm the last one that wants any type of government overreach, I can guarantee you that. But some of the things you gotta think about on this is not just buildings or commercial, where's the discussion in land? There's been a ton of problems with the land, all up and down the corridor, properties adjacent to some that I have, other people, some people in the room, constant problem with transits and code enforcement. I talk to Daniel maybe about once a week, once every other week, with a constant discussion about what we're working on, or, or what happened over here, what happened over there. You have to include land, too. If you're not gonna include land, maybe you should consider redoing your ordinance or something, but this might actually give you a path to actually keep the land clean and help with the homeless thing. So there's paths that you can intertwine with this that actually might be very valid. But if you incentivize people to take their old buildings and remodel them, like they did in the seventies, you look back into the history, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, they did that downtown, and that's how come downtown got redone from the original design. So if you offer incentives, these property owners may actually do things. But if you can't get a permit, again, that's something that needs to be worked on. This could trigger all of that together, something to think about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. I, I take off my city clerk hat and I, I put my business owner hat on, my resident hat, and my real estate hat, as I am a, a real estate agent. And I believe that the ordinance really needs to focus on the blight that's happening on these properties. As a business owner, the comment was made earlier that, well, if we're, we're gonna de-incentitize people to come in and, and build, make a new business, well, in the same point in time, when I drive through a community and half of the businesses in an area are full of weeds and things like that, I'm not going to build or, or, or develop a business in that area. I'm gonna move on to a different area, whether it be in Atwater or in another community. So it's very important that we look at the blight issues, not just all vacant properties, but really, if you're going to, to do something, your teeth need to be through the blight issues. I don't mind paying a small fee to register my vacant property, but if I'm maintaining it, then I'm not going to worry about code enforcement or somebody else coming up to me. It's when the issues come into hand where the weeds are up over your head and, you know, people, I've got all the windows broken, that's where we really need to be focused on those properties. Nobody cares if my, my vacant property is there and it's well-maintained. Those are, those are a little bit different situations, I just wanted to add that in.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing nobody else coming forward, I'm gonna close public comment on that. I would say, you know, some good suggestions there. Do you think we could do something like by zones, like the downtown business zone, Atwater Boulevard thoroughfare, kind of, though it's not citywide necessarily, but the areas in town that are most egregious, like Atwater Boulevard?
We could definitely look into that. We're looking into feasibility, the option of looking at zones versus the entire city.
Comments, questions? It's not the actual vote here. And how do we give direction if we don't vote on it?
I mean, you can get, you, you should vote, but you should buy.
Well, let me ask this. John, do you think you have? Well, let me ask this. John, do you think you have enough information and direction to move forward?
I have enough, if you're choosing option two, then I definitely have enough to move forward. If you're choosing option one, then I could also move forward on that, but it would require making some choices that you saw in this presentation about scope and enforcement and cost and all of those things, so.
Okay, well, for myself, I think, too, we'd need more information, for sure. I think. Start down here.
I would agree. I think we need to gather some more information. I appreciate all of the public comment. It's certainly not my intention to hurt local business owners who are, you know, being responsible and thoughtful about who they rent their properties to. My focus is more on individuals who are purchasing our properties because they find them to be cheaper, and then they're just leaving them vacant. And, you know, those are buildings that people who live here, we would love to see local businesses thriving, and we're just not able to even rent those properties because we're not even getting phone calls back. So, it's very frustrating, you know. I live in the community, and I'd like to see restaurants and shops and people thriving, and so it's frustrating to think that there are individuals who are just purchasing the properties and using them to sit vacant so that they can use them as tax write-offs. I don't think that's right.
I'm not in favor of this, especially with another penalty being added to the property owners.
Would you be okay, though, if we looked at it further?
Yeah, it's going that way anyway, so, go ahead.
I'm making a motion that we approve number two and haven't come back to us within two months.
Second.
Okay.
So we're going to go with number two. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because originally we weren't going to vote, so. Now we're going that way.
We're going that way.
Okay. So we're going to motion by Kale, second by Rochester. Kale?
Yes.
Rochester?
Yes.
Raymond?
No.
Ambry's?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you for that. Thank everybody for their comments, suggestions. Okay, now we're on to item 13, which is a quarterly update from the police chief.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This quarterly report will cover the months of April, May, and June of 2025. First off with department statistics. For those three months, we had 10,473 total incidents, 6,141 calls for service, 917 traffic stops, 1,010 cases generated, 80 traffic collisions, 243 total arrests, and there were 633 citations written. Some of the accomplishments in this three-month period, this will answer Mr. Price's question earlier about the Axon cost on measure B, that was for the interview room cameras for the detectives, and they've actually already come to be very beneficial in a major incident we had a few weeks ago. The cameras we had before were not streaming well, and were not connecting, so that they would spend hours waiting for this video to load, and it just took up investigations' time. They said that in this short term that they've used these, they're much better, and they're able to access them a lot quicker, and they upload to the same storage as our body cameras and our dash cameras, so it's been a very good thing. The records division, for those of you that have been in here during business hours, you'll see that our records division is now located where finance used to be at the big window. That is much more user-friendly for the public when they come in, they don't have to look around the hallways for the police department, you can see it when you walk in. And we're working on getting signage to make that more clear. Flock license plate reader cameras have continued to assist the department in solving crimes. The detectives rave about the flock cameras and how easy it makes it to identify a vehicle that may be involved in a crime. And we've met with a flock representative that covers our area a few months ago about adding additional cameras to the city. That representative no longer works for the company, so I'm waiting to get back, hear back from them on who are representatives now. We started to map it out, so we can figure out the problem areas and where we'd like to add cameras. Now it's just a matter of working with that representative and getting some pricing together. We also, this has come up a few times, the radio issues that we have in the city, and this is a county-wide problem, and it's being worked on. We actually had a meeting last week, and there was a presentation for our new radio system, which will be hopefully online early next year. It converts all the radio frequencies to digital, and this has been something that's been talked about for years and years and years, but it sounds like it's getting actually close to actually happening. But in the meantime, the Tango Tango app is a service on cell phones, so we're able to give access for all of our staff to this app where they can actually hear the radio traffic in very, very clear detail. It helps me when I'm at home, because if we have an incident, I can actually turn on my phone and listen to the radio traffic, which even with the best radio where I live, I wouldn't be able to hear all the way over here. So, it's been very valuable. You can pretty much be anywhere, as long as you have cellphone service, you can hear this, our radio traffic, and that's been a really good thing to have as well. Our recognitions in this three-year period, or three-month period, dispatcher December Hunter was named our 2024 dispatcher of the year, and she was honored at a luncheon for countywide dispatcher of the year award recipients. Detective Mulligan was our 2024 officer of the year, and she was also recognized at a countywide, this was a dinner, that recognized officers of the year for all the law enforcement agencies in the county. Officers Bowen, Brown, and Lopez were MAD award recipients. We went to, this was last month, we went to Table Mountain, they did a recognition for all the recipients in the area. In order to meet the criteria for a MAD award, you have to have at least 25 DUI arrests in the calendar year, and all three of these officers met that. Officer Salazar was our Victory Baptist Church 2024 Hometown Hero recipient, and since Pastor Miller's here, I'd like to thank him for doing that. It really was a nice ceremony, and it really is nice for our people to be recognized in that way. So, thank you, and we look forward to continuing that in the future. Staffing, we've had some updates in staffing in the last three months. We recruited internally and selected a traffic officer. Our shift change occurs next week, so he will actually be moving into that traffic position next week. It's going to initially entail a lot of training, it involves a motorcycle, so he's going to work with the City of Merced and their motor unit to do a lot of training with them, and get comfortable riding the bike prior to going to motor school. Motor school's a very intensive training, it's certified through post, and you really, it's a lot of feathering of the clutch and a lot of low-speed turns and things, so you really have to be very comfortable with your bike in order to pass that school. So, we want to make sure that he's comfortable and ready to go before we send him. But in the meantime, he'll also be in a car doing traffic enforcement in that position. Sergeant promotion, we obviously just did that today. Sergeant Vargas started in his role two weeks ago, just right before the Fourth of July, and he's done a very good job so far. The record supervisor position is currently vacant. We lost our record supervisor a few weeks ago. We actually did interviews, second interviews today, and selected a candidate, so that candidate will have to go through the background process, and if successful, then we'll have a new record supervisor very shortly. One officer vacancy, and that was as a result of Sergeant Snyder moving on to Dos Palos, when we promoted Officer Vargas to sergeant, that created an officer vacancy. We have someone in backgrounds for that now, so hopefully that will happen very soon. The two dispatcher vacancies, they gave notice in June, so even though they're still here, they're not gone yet, I included them in this report. Those vacancies will be coming up next week, and the recruitment for that is underway, and hopefully we'll be able to go through the testing process and find two successful candidates to replace them as soon as possible. Upcoming projects, we will continue to reorganize the internal offices of the police department now that we've taken over the area that finance vacated. Like I said, we have records in the front now. We've put code enforcement and the community service officer in the back half of that section of the building. We're going to, I should have talked about this in staffing, we're going to start recruiting here in the near future for two part-time community service officers, so they will also be housed back there with the rest of code enforcement and community service. In the meantime, moving those people into there allowed us to kind of shuffle some people around in other places where we could maximize the space and get people more room to work. We created a traffic office. Now that we have a traffic officer, he needs an office, so we were able to convert one of the rooms to that, and then some other shuffling's going on. We're working on replacing some end-of-life vehicles in the fleet. I was hoping to have that before council already, but just as we were working on finalizing the budget, I was notified by Enterprise that Ford's, ever since COVID, Ford has really reduced their window of time you can order vehicles, and they moved it up, so it closed just before we approved the budget, and so we weren't able to get in on 2025 vehicles. So, I'm just waiting for the 2026 window to be announced and the pricing on that, so that we have an accurate quote, so that I can come to council for approval on that. I mentioned already the flock cameras, we're looking to add some additional AOPR cameras throughout the city in order to better help our investigations in identifying suspect vehicles and crimes. And then I already mentioned the countywide radio infrastructure upgrade. And I'll tell you that I was part of the board in the Bay Area when we did a similar radio infrastructure, and it was really amazing, the quality increase when it was done. It was night and day. I mean, we had the same issues that we have here with analog radios and the static issues. The static was gone overnight, and it was really weird because everyone's voice sounded robotic, and you had to get used to who was who, because you get used to everyone's voice and you know who's talking, but when it converted, you really couldn't tell. But we eventually figured that out, and it was outstanding technology, and I'm glad that it's finally coming here. That's the end of my report. Any questions?
Before we start asking questions, we care to enlighten us about what happened on the Fourth of July.
Sure. I brought that just in case you asked it. It wasn't in my report because the report ended at June 30th, but I'll tell you, for the Fourth of July, we had 73 total calls for service for fireworks, and 14 of those came from the Nail 'Em app. So the Nail 'Em app was being monitored by dispatch, and that was successful in helping us identify problem areas. We've had, we got one more site that came in last night, so I had 22 sites, but now we have 23 total citations were written between the period right before the Fourth of July and now. So, obviously people continue to put off fireworks, they can continue to receive citations, and that number may increase.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I do. Chief, after approving the service agreement with Merced County Animal Services, there was quite a bit of add-ons to that, including animal recovery and stuff like that for animal services. In your quarterly report, could you report those numbers also, just so we can keep track of them? Because you're going to charge us $75 for us taking that, for somebody from the community taking a dog over there. So, I'd really like to get insight into that.
Sure. So the per-animal fees, I looked at the old contract that just expired and the new one, and none of the per-animal fees increased? So that's what they were charging us, right?
Yeah, I understand it didn't increase. I just don't know what, how many of them are using, and how many are being charged for, and I'd like to see those.
Okay, I can work on that for my next report.
Yeah, for your next review date. Thank you.
I just had one other comment regarding the animal services also. I did mention to City Manager Home that when I looked at the county's proposed budget under animal services, they indicated the revenue for fiscal year 2526, the category would be budgeted at prior year levels. So I'm just curious, when the county discovered that there needed to be an increase in the cost, when it looks like, when they were, you know, calculating their proposed budget, they were keeping things status quo, and all of a sudden now we're seeing this increase. So I just wanted to make a note of that, too.
Thank you.
Okay, after another council comments, is there any comments from the public? Come on up.
In regards to the radios, I've asked this question before, and I really would like an answer some year, maybe. Are all officers assigned a city-owned radio?
Yes.
Do they have, so they don't have to use their own personal cell phones?
Cell phone or radio?
I mean, cellphone, excuse me, cellphone.
They are. Every officer's issued their own cellphone, or a department cellphone.
Yeah, because that would be a good idea. So they all have their own cellphone, city at water?
That's correct.
Thank you, that's all I needed. Couple months ago, I asked that question, and Chris forgot to remind me.
I know I talked enough tonight, but Chief, I'd like to maybe possibly set up a meeting with you. As you know, we had a couple incidents that ended up at Five Corners. I have approximately seven or eight cameras, they're pretty highfalutin cameras, and they're there just to surveillance and protect the site and potential issues. Given those two circumstances, I worked with officers, provided film and anything, you know, it ended up being beneficial, is my understanding. I'd like to see if we can possibly have a further discussion about maybe doing a joint venture on that, because they are pretty valid, and we've already had multiple issues. Just something I may want to talk about.
Yeah, and I saw you out there that day, that incident, and I heard you talking with one of the officers about your cameras, and we really appreciate you supplying that footage to us, because that is such a high-traffic area and so much...
Well, and I figured, you know, hey, since they're there, we might as well at least have a conversation.
Yes, definitely.
Okay, this is surrounding the fireworks, and Chief, I could tell you, and this goes for any police agency, you guys are overwhelmed already. You're understaffed, you know, you've lost the battle before you even got into the war. I came before the council maybe 25 years ago, after New Year's. Rich Hawthorne was the chief at the time, and I came in here to convey an incident that happened at my house. I'm sitting inside the house on New Year's, and I hear fireworks going off everywhere, then I hear thumping on my roof. I ran outside, I had three pop bottle rockets sitting on my shake-shingle roof. I went and I put a fire, or a garden hose to it, drug them down, put them in a bag, and I brought them here to council and showed them. Now, that is still going on. And as an example, I'll put it up here, this is what I took out of my patio and all that, and I know it's hard for people to see, but this here is one of those incendiaries that comes out of the ones that explode up above. That one didn't explode, this one did, and it wound up in my yard. Now, the one here that didn't explode was on my patio, right near the roof. So I don't know whether it hit the roof and bounced down, I don't know. All I know is, is that that's the kind of stuff that's going on in my neighborhood, and I'm sick of it. From 25 years ago till now, there's been no plan, there's been nothing proactive by county, city, anybody to go after these guys. Now, if you've been paying attention to some of the local media, you'll see that Los Banos went and bust, had a big bust of illegal fireworks out there. Their fine for illegal fireworks is $10,000. And when I sat in this middle chair, I made that suggestion, you know that, Brian. Sacramento County, if you get caught with illegal fireworks, $30,000 bucks. LA County, up to $50,000. Yet Atwater is only $1,000. There's nothing here that is going to be a deterrent to that. It's got to be, it's got to sting, or it's not going to make any difference. Money is the answer. I would be totally in favor of putting together a reward system for arresting conviction of people with illegal fireworks, take it out of measure B, because that is public safety at its finest. Put together a good incentive, people come to money. I want to see if we can bring the ordinance that is surrounding fireworks, have it brought back to the next meetings for discussion.
Anyway, I gotta be addressing that in my comments, so.
Okay, well, I'm glad the chief, you know, got some citations out of the way, but when I find this stuff in my backyard, and I have pop bottle rockets on a shake-shingle roof, and that was 25 years ago, nothing's being done. Put together a task force, include Livingston, Merced, the county...
Okay.
Atwater, everybody.
Thank you.
Go after them.
We'll talk about it. Anybody else?
Real quick, on the fireworks thing, I agree with Jim. But I am curious, we always talk this time of year about how many citations were issued. Can we get an update on like last year's, like how many citations turned into convictions and how much fines, how many fines were collected? So, thank you.
Yeah, I think we have that information fairly. Andy?
We issued eight citations last year, and I think we issued five citations the year before. So with this year, with the changes that we've implemented, we have almost tripled, we've nearly tripled the number of citations that we've given out. And for the number of citations that have been paid, I think last year, I don't want to misspeak, but I, it might have been only one that was paid last year. And we've had, I believe, five that have been paid so far this year.
Okay, thank you.
First time up tonight, Rich Miller, 334 Silva Drive, also Pastor Victory Baptist, 1280 Sierra Vista Street. Chief, thank you so much for the quarterly report. I found it very insightful. Thank you also for your support of our Hometown Hero service that we had back in May. There were just two things I had questions about. Don't expect the answers right now. But number one was about the license plate reader. I was wondering if that can be used to identify if people are driving a vehicle that is not registered? Because I've noticed a lot when I'm driving around, people are driving vehicles and they, maybe the vehicle's registered, but they haven't put a tag on their, their new sticker on it. And it's three months past, or even I've seen some that are, you know, a year past when they should have their sticker on. And maybe it's registered, but, you know, just wasn't sure if the license plate readers give us that option. The other thing was with the traffic officer, if residents would be allowed to call in if they have an area that they're concerned about? Like, for example, I live on Silva Drive, there on Silva Drive and Elmore Terrace, people, there are people that don't stop at all for those stop signs. And I'm just concerned that one day, a child's gonna get hit because of people just flying through. And it's not California stops, you know, that we're accused of having out here. They're actually just going right through. So I wasn't sure if that would be something that residents can, can turn in as, hey, this is an area of concern. Would the officer be able to look at it?
We have a reporting portal on our city website that people can put complaints in that will get directed to us. For some reason, the name is escaping me.
The reported issue, is that what you're thinking of?
Yes.
I would use TextMyGov. I think that's a better, yeah. TextMyGov is the best option for that.
Yeah, that's an app for your phone. You can use that. Okay, well done. No more comment?
I believe the phone number for TextMyGov is 209-219-2099. You don't have to download an app. You can just text anything to that, and it'll text you back. And it's as simple as, it'll give you a prompt, and it'll ask you, is this, is there a problem with graffiti? Is there a problem with, you can, you name it. And by, you know, typing back and answering its questions, it'll, it'll prompt you each step of the way. Again, you don't have to download anything. It's just like you're texting a friend. And you can, you can send it a photo, and that'll get uploaded into our system. It'll ask you for an address of the location with the issue, and you can provide that. And then our, either our code enforcement or our public works will get involved, depending on what the issue is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the quarterly update from our new battalion chief, Josh Randall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, and community. I am Josh Randall, your battalion chief for the Atwater City Fire Department. I'm here to provide you a quarterly update on the fire department. And first off, I want to thank you for the Incident responses, year-to-date calls for the two stations are at 2,243. Station 41 is at 1,377 calls. Station 42 is 866 calls. The Lucas Device has been utilized 12 times. And of those 12, three people have walked out of the hospital.
Please explain what the Lucas Device is.
The Lucas Device is an automatic compression device that's used by the firefighters to provide continuous adequate CPR at the proper rhythm. For the Fire Marshal's Office, 76 first violation notices been sent out and 14 second violation notices. The second is when the problem wasn't resolved under the first issue. There have been 100 multifamily complex inspections, 14 school inspections, which are completed under SB 1205. There were 11 fireworks booth inspections, two fireworks display inspections. Business inspections that have been completed were 44 for current businesses, and then 24 new businesses. And there was a total revenue generated through the Fire Marshal's Office of those inspections of $17,230. Personnel, we brought on board the four new firefighters that joined the City of Atwater Fire Department team. Chief Bobby Iuso moved on to his position with Merced County Fire Department. I became your chief on June 9. And we currently have one fire apparatus engineer positioned vacant. And when the FAEs become available, we'll review the candidates. An FAE is the person that drives the fire engine, or ladder truck. Public education and engagements. Personnel participated in the Atwater and Buhat Colony High School MCI events, career days, and state exam preparation at elementary schools, senior exit interviews at Buhat Colony High School, station tours for Schaefer Elementary and a local Girl Scout troop. Resources participated in the Open Cockpit Day at Castle, attended the Women Veterans Dinner. Two ride-alongs occurred for citizens that were interested in becoming in a fire service career. And we participated in the Fourth of July Parade. Accomplishments and training. Personnel continued to train with the Lucas Device. They're conducting hazmat, rescue, and additional training and preparation for the current fire season. Atwater City Council and the Merced County Board of Supervisors approved the Merced County, or the agreement to have a shared mechanic with Merced County. That contract has already been utilized multiple times to fix issues with fire apparatus. And we conducted a zero tolerance operation for illegal fireworks, which netted in 527 pounds seized. That's enough to fill, to fill up three pickup trucks worth of fireworks. And that was all out of the City of Atwater. And some upcoming projects, we still need to purchase airbags and stabilization and extrication equipment for the Type 6. That's the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Sure. Tell us about fireworks on the Fourth of July.
The Fourth of July was less active than the days prior, and then it subsequently slowed down afterwards. We worked with the police department, the sheriff's department, and Cal Fire Law Enforcement to come in and saturate the City of Atwater, conducting on-the-spot seizures and citations were issued. Do not have the number for the Cal Fire Law Enforcement officers, but the sheriff's department also assisted in responding to reports of illegal fireworks. And together, we were able to seize, like I said, 527 pounds that was turned over to the Office of State Fire Marshal to have disposed of at no cost to the city.
That's good to hear. What, what about the people that you confiscated them from? Did they get fined, or?
Some people were issued citations. Some people were not issued citations. Each officer has the discretion based on the situation as to how they're gonna handle the incident. When it's one person by himself, and there's 50 extremely angry people, that you're taking their illegal property from them and ruining their fun, that's not generally a smart situation to then issue them a citation when you're by yourself. If there are other officers around to assist in that, then that changes the situation. But like I said, it's all based on that situation.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that. Any questions, comments?
I just have a comment. It's related to the fireworks also, coming from someone who has a family member who's recently lost her husband. Her backyard caught on fire due to fireworks. She lost a lot of her fence and some of her property. And so I realize that it's probably not the most comfortable thing to issue a citation for these individuals who are in possession of illegal fireworks. But I think it's absolutely necessary, because people should be held accountable when they are violating the law. So that's just my comments. And I think that, you know, people, you know, you, individuals who are engaging this kind of behavior, I think they don't think about the repercussions of what happens to individuals who fall victim to their fireworks. So just something food for thought for, for staff and for the, for the public.
I'm hearing interest in, maybe I'm getting ahead of myself here, but it sounds like there's interest in looking at our fireworks ordinance. And if it's the, some direction from the council, we're happy to look into that. Just as a future item, not to discuss tonight, but to, to bring back to the council.
Okay, well, I was gonna talk about it later, but I can talk about it now, I suppose. So it's my intent to form an ad hoc committee of council members to talk about this. You may remember that three years ago, when I got up here, I'm the one that pushed for actually having fines for illegal fireworks at $1,000. Should it be raised? Probably. Yeah, definitely. I'd like to see that money put into fireworks enforcement fund, so that we have, if we need to hire other staff for that time period, or overtime or whatever, that could help pay for that. Maybe $30,000 fine would really help that, for that there. But I want to look at other things. You know, there was, there's been at least four accidents that have occurred in the last couple of weeks, one being in Espardo, where the fireworks factory or the storage blew up and killed seven employees there. That probably won't happen here. But in Espardo, these are all down in Southern California, 18 people were displaced by fireworks caused fire. One person died. Simi Valley, a home burned, one dead. And that was because of illegal storage in their garage. And in Buena Park, same situation. But there, an eight-year-old girl died after the fireworks exploded near her. So we don't want to see that happen here in Atwater. There are people that are, that are trafficking, trafficking, trafficking in illegal fireworks, and they are doing it out of their house. And I think there's some ways we can work on to find out how we can, uh, stop that, basically. Cal Fire Enforcement, Josh, I thank you very much for getting them involved. I've asked for that over the last couple of years. Didn't get anywhere with that. So thank you very much for working on that. Never heard that we actually confiscated fireworks in the last few years. So thank you for that. And I've got a lot of information from other agencies. I know, I think with Sacramento Fire, they, they send the citation in the mail after the fact. They're using drones, like pinpoint where it is, and then you get the ticket in the mail. So maybe we don't have to actually be in that situation where you have the angry mob kind of a thing. It just shows up in the mailbox next week. So that's, those are the kinds of things we want to do. And so we'll be bringing that back at the next meeting to appoint the ad hoc committee for that. Sound good?
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other council comments, I'll open it up. Comments from the public? Okay, so nobody come forward on that one, then we'll move along here. Now we're on comments from the public.
At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record. However, it is not required. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and replaced on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Okay, under the Brown Act, members of the public must address the city council as a legislative body of the city, not other members of the public or staff. I'm going to open public comment. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, I have three speaker cards.
Speaker cards, okay. Okay, so we'll go with that. And then also, just FYI, we do have a Spanish translator available this evening. So, okay.
First speaker card is for Shirley Davis.
Mayor and Council Shirley Davis, Atwater. I am sad, because I need to announce to you all and to the public that due to unforeseen circumstances, we will be postponing the Legacy Ball in the, in the coming week. We will share the date of the grand event. But we want to thank you so much for your support. We can't control everything. But we will be looking toward November. So we're looking for a date right now. But we are hoping that everything will come together and everybody will be okay. And we will reestablish our event. So I just wanted to let you know that. Looking forward for you celebrating with us. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us know.
Okay, next we have Karthik.
Alrighty, hey, everyone. Karthik Prasad from Congressman Adam Gray's office. Just wanted to give a quick ledge update to the City of Atwater and to the members of the community that are present today. For some happier Fourth of July news, just wanted to thank the city on behalf of Congressman Gray for throwing a excellent Fourth of July parade. We had some members of our DC staff over, and they don't get as much fun in the sun as we do in the district. So it's great having them out here, and it was really great engaging with the community. So thank you for that. I mean, in Congress, man, the congressman's been real busy. And in typical Adam Gray fashion, he's named all of the bills, very, rolls off the tongue quite great. So just want to start off, just today, we introduced the Livestock Indemnity Program Improvement Act that updates USDA's payment rates to ensure farmers are fairly compensated. Last week, we introduced the Protecting Patient Access to Cancer and Complex Therapies Act, which aims to ensure fair reimbursements for medical providers and commercial availability for patients. The PFAS Alternatives Act was also introduced last month, which aims to support the development of next-generation PFAS-free firefighting gear, which I'm sure the fire chief can appreciate. And additionally, that was also introduced alongside the Honoring Our Fallen Heroes Act, which expands access to federal support to families of first responders who have passed away due to exposure to carcinogens during the, during their service, and also expands some disability benefits. And last month, we introduced the Wildlife Response and Preparedness Act, which establishes a national 30-minute standard response time for wildfires on federal land, alongside the Valley Water Protection Act, which aims to ensure safe and reliable water deliveries for farmers and producers. And finally, all the way back early last month, we introduced the STRIVE Act, which aims to limit co-pay for our veterans at VA medical centers. Been real busy, and we've got all these bills on the floor that the congressman is working on hard. And, you know, we're always looking forward to hear members of our public what they have to say. And, you know, you're all our constituents, we want to know. So we're actually having some mobile district office hours in Atwater on July 24th, from 1:30 to 3:30, at 760 East Bellevue, alongside other elected representatives. Additionally, if y'all can't wait, and you really want to throw some tomatoes at me, which I can appreciate, we're having some mobile district office hours in Merced this Wednesday, from 10 to 12, at 678 West 18th Street, in the Merced City Council chambers. So if you feel like driving a little bit to throw some tomatoes on Wednesday, I'll be happy to have you. And looking forward to engaging with you all and discussing what we can do and how we can be better. So thanks to the city. And for anyone who was at the little decommissioning ceremony from the, for the Harrier jet that flew in from China Lake, that was pretty awesome. And I know me and Mr. John Cale had big beaming smiles on our faces, because oh, man, it was like being a third grader again. So thanks a bunch, and have a great day.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Patty Horcia.
I live at 617 Juniper, and it's on the corner of High Street, a very busy street. I have a disabled daughter, and I've called Renee from Public Works, I believe, to come and see if he can put up some kind of ramp right there, because I noticed that those four corners don't have a ramp, and it's really unsafe for me to bring my daughter in her chair. I have a video, if you guys want to see, the way I have to come off, go down the sidewalk off to the neighbor's driveway, and then I have to get onto Juniper, have to make sure that no cars are coming, so I can get back onto the, into my driveway, because my daughter's babysitter lives on the next corner. So, I wanted to see, they told me to come here to see if you guys can maybe either push it along or help me, because it's really unsafe for me to be walking with her like that, because she doesn't walk, so I have to have her in a wheelchair. And like I said, we're put some stop signs right there. Like I said, those four corners don't have no ramps at all. And I've called Renee back since January, I think I called him like January, February, I called him again in April, and they said they were working on it, and they still haven't come out and done anything about it. I want to see if something can be done. I know, I see them working on other roads somewhere else, you know, throughout the city, and Juniper is a very busy street. I never come in my front yard, but I do have to go get my daughter from the next corner. So, I just wanted to bring that up today.
Okay. Well, Justin Vincent, the Public Works Director.
Yeah.
Either Chris here, the city manager, or Justin will be giving you a call to look at that further.
Please, thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may. So, this site, you're talking High Street and Juniper.
Yes.
We've evaluated that, and when it was originally brought up, your concern back in the spring, that's when that intersection was added to our queue of sidewalk repairs. It needs sidewalk ramps there, and so we have a list, and we get to that once it gets to that part of the list. So, throughout the summer and the dry months, our sidewalk crews are going to each spot in order, in order to fix tripping hazards throughout the city and make it safer and so forth. So, you are, the one that you're talking about is on the list.
Is it a long list?
It's, well, I would say that in the past, you know, years ago, there weren't as many sidewalk repairs as we do now, so we're going through the list faster than we have in the past. But it's not a very short list, so, but we will get to it.
I had a tree when I first moved there, that would be in the way of my bus whenever they would pick up my daughter, and I called, and they came out within a month to take off that tree. I'm not saying that I'm more, you know, like more, I should be more on top of the list, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
They could call me back, they came and did it right away. Like, I, within a month, they came and took down that tree.
Yeah.
And that helped, because my bus kept having to go on the street to avoid hitting that tree.
Right. That's a bad intersection. I live over the neck of the woods, too. There needs to be.
Yeah, they come flying through that street.
And that's, and it's, turns on the High Street, which goes to Thomas Leeds School, there's a lot of school traffic.
Very, very much. So, that's why I was saying, why don't they put a stop sign? My neighbors' rents have gotten broken.
Okay, so it's on the list.
Okay.
That's on the sidewalk list, and then there's the other list with the traffic thing, and then Chris will work up.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. Anybody else?
I have another speaker card, Mayor.
Speaker, okay.
For Robert Waldau.
I have four speakers when I come up here, I'm always nervous, I don't want. Anyway, my name's Robert Waldau, I live at 113 West G Street, San Diego, on the land behind us here. And I want to give you a brief update, because one of the challenges with that property that we've been developing is, the developer, as of June 30th, backed out. They couldn't find a path forward for developing the capital stack. However, since their notification in December, I've had great meetings with Chris, I've had great meetings with John Checkley, we've met with HCD, all this, on how to move this project forward. What was really great about that was during those meetings, Chris Arthur, Chris, you met Chris on our Zoom call, Chris Arthur is with Eden Housing, is a really, really well-known developer, so much so that it was, Laura, hi, Chris, Laura, how are you doing? When we had a meeting with HCD, and I've got a, one of the things I want to pass out to the council is my, an additional copy of the book, so that city council can take a look at it, as well as letting you know that how deeply Eden is committed to this project is, you know, I put out, you know, I know the importance of a CHODO, which is Community Housing Development Organization. A CHODO basically is a, you get preferential treatment for not only HCD, but Home, but USDA, the top 15% of monies are available to CHODOs. And so, developing that CHODO, not only for Atwater, but for Merced, is an important one. And so, Chris dedicated to the idea of giving, you know, intellectual property and cash to be able to support that. In addition, they also talked about bringing this project forward and supporting it in air quote, "any way possible." So, when that means, and Chris, she knows the terminology better than anybody now, because she's been educated, that a 9999 project is available, which means, for the city of Atwater, Atwater had agreed to do basically some granting for this project of $800,000. Under this program, there's, you have to go through the SLI, so it's a process, but there's no additional financial commitment to the city other than the SLI. So, I wanted to bring that forward, and then the last part that I want to talk about is, I'm nervous, but I do talk a lot. What I need to hear from the city is feedback from the city. What more can I do? My inbox, as it relates to this project, is empty. I've done all the things I can do to move it forward. I need to hear from the city what are those threats are to make this a reality, or conversely, what are those opportunities that this project can bring forward? It is a $50 million project, it's a big project, with, under this guidance, all of it paid outside of the city of Atwater, and all the, I'm not sure. City of Atwater Housing Development.
Okay. Chris, don't leave this wolf with you, okay? Do you want it right now, or? Leave it here as city clerk, please. All right, thank you. Done with the speaker cards?
That is it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak?
Evidently, our budget's kind of skinny this year, it's not as fat as it's been, and I'm just kind of browsing around your salaries of one, two, three, four, five, six department heads, excluding Justin, because he lives in the city of Atwater. Six don't. We're paying them six-figure salaries. We've got over a million and a half dollars, including yearly, including their Bennys. We're paying people that are employed by Atwater who do not live in our county. They're taking their nice fat paychecks to their own little town. I'm against it, and I'm looking at you folks and telling you, the next time you hire somebody that's a department head, you need to require them to come to every single council meeting, every single count, every study session, anything that you have to attend, they should have their old heinies here, too. But I think you need to take into consideration that these people need to live in the county, so that way, if they spend the money in the county, we get the taxes. Right now, you know, they're just taking it, "thank you very much," and then Friday night at probably 4 o'clock, they sneak out early, you know? They head on to their little houses, or big houses, and enjoy our tax dollars. So, think about it. You know, I think about it every day, when a lot of you look down your nose at us when we ask you a question. Well, you work for us. You work for the taxpayers, all you people that are getting these six-figure salaries, you work for us, so don't forget it. Thank you.
All right.
Well, not everything is that bad. I'm actually not up here to gripe about something. I just wanted to convey, on behalf of the Atwater Fourth of July Committee, our sincere thanks to Justin and Chief, and everyone on the council that helped to make this year's Fourth of July celebration a huge success. We had a record number of people that appeared, that came to council for the fireworks and concert show out there, with a lot of vendors, people just had a very, very good time. This is the biggest deal in the local area right here. Merced doesn't do one, and Livingston does one, but I've got people coming from Livingston here. It's, it can't be all that good. But in any case, ours is really, really good, and we have a very, very good and dedicated staff of people on the Fourth of July Committee, and I'll bring that back later on, but it's a pleasure to work with this committee. I've never worked with a better group of people who are smart, they're common sense thinkers, you know, it's been a pleasure since 19, or excuse me, since 2015, when I first became associated with them. And it's a great event, I'm glad that Atwater is the beneficiary of it. Everybody had a great time, and with very, very little, you know, glitches along the way, and we really had no problems. Everything worked out really, really well. And I just want to take the moment to go and thank the city of Atwater, and in particular, the Chief and Justin, you know, the Public Works guys were really outstanding, and as were the cops, they made everything work out real well, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening again. Adam Reed, President of Old Town Atwater. I want to let the council know that we've got a couple events coming up. Obviously, we have the ice rink that's going to be coming back in November, and that'll operate from November 14th to January 5th. We also have been working hard on a farmer's market, and we have turned an application to the city, and we've set some dates for that. It's not going to be a certified farmer's market, but it's going to be a farmer's market and crafter's market. We're going to accept vendors that have locally grown produce and food products that are, you know, able to be sold in that fashion legally. And then we're also going to have people that make things, crafts, metal signs, wood things, stuff like that, that come out. It's, we're not going to accept any vendors that are buying stuff and reselling it, so we're going to really have a strong focus on crafts and food, you know, produce and meats and stuff like, sorry, stuff like that. And the dates for that is going to be, we're going to do it on the first and third, Thursday of the month, August 7th and 21st, September 4th and 18th, October 2nd and 16th. And it'll be held at Ralston Park, and we're doing this with the, with the support of the Women's Club, and we are going to, we're working on having, we're going to have Grove closed, and we're going to possibly have some, like, food trucks along there, and then the Women's Club is going to let us use their lawn area and porch to have dining, like seating tables and stuff, and then, you know, live, live local band, you know, it kind of fits the theme of a farmer's market there. So, I want to let you guys know about that. And then also, not as the President of Old Town Atwater, I would like to thank Chris Home and John O'Connor for having a meeting with me and a developer that I'm working with on a project here in Atwater. We are very encouraged with the progress that we made in the meeting, and everything looks like it's, we're getting everything back on track. The stuff that's happened over the last couple of years, John's working very hard on it, and I know I've been a critic of his, not necessarily him personally, but, you know, the role of the CDD Director. John, I've had a couple of discussions with him, he's very humble, and he knows where he needs help, and he knows what he can do, and that's very, very good for me to hear, that he, you know, he knows what he doesn't know, and he's going to find answers and/or people to help him with it. So, I did appreciate that. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, so nobody else come forward, I'm closing public comment. We'll do council reports, we'll start with John.
Okay, so first, congratulations to Senator Fergus, that's awesome. And then Mr. Price, right there, says, "Thank you for the Fourth of July, it was another awesome parade of fireworks, and everything that day was great." And I even saw on Facebook a guy from Arizona who said, "I wish our community would do something like that," and I was like, "I'm lucky we have it." I want to congratulate the Castle Air Museum on the arrival of an AV-8 Harrier jet, an excellent vertical takeoff, vertical landing jet. It came in the day in front of a big crowd out at the airport, and it brought back fond memories for me of when I was in the Navy, seeing that aircraft take off and land 100 times, and it made me very proud to sit there and watch that thing go up and down like it does. And then, the last thing I'd like to do is, say, it is a profound sadness that I have to say farewell to a cherished friend, a Dravoli community leader, and a superary Elk, Mr. Ken Hen. Ken passed away peacefully at his home this past Saturday, surrounded by the comforting presence of his family, friends, and loved ones. His absence leaves tremendous voids in the heart of all who knew him. His elk brothers and sisters, his community, and many lives that he touched with his kindness and dedication. Ken's legacy is one of unwavering service, compassion, and humility. He was an air force veteran, a dedicated nurse, a hero, and above all, a fabulous role model to his family, friends, and fellow elks. His presence will be a steady reason for our community, a man whose quiet strength and warm spirit inspired those around him. I ask that you keep Ken's family in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. I know personally, I will always remember him each time I see the flagpole at the Atwater Memorial Building, and reflect on it, quiet, and reflect on him at the quiet hour of 11, when elk around the country pause and honor their absent members. Rest in peace, Mr. Ken. Your service, your friendship, and your spirit will never be forgotten. Thank you, that's all.
Thanks for that, John. Danny?
Mr. Price, if you don't mind reporting back to the Fourth of July Committee, that you guys did an awesome job. Looks like it was a very successful event, it was a pleasure to be a part of it. Chiefs, thank you both for the reports, a lot of good information here. I also do want to give a shout out to our fire department, though, for allowing myself and my son to ride in one of the trucks during the parade. Your crew is always wonderful to us, and if they're that same way, if they're that way with my family, I know they're the same way with our community, so thank you, guys.
Kalisa?
So, I would also like to express my sincere thank you to the Fourth of July Committee. I also want to thank our police officers for keeping us safe. I think that that event was very well done. Something that I think that's lost on the community is the expense that, you know, that's incurred as a result of putting this event on. I was able to attend one of the meetings and to hear this dedicated group of volunteers trying to figure out how they were going to get donations to pay for the fireworks. There's a lot of work that's involved in coordinating all of the things that this group does, and they're just a phenomenal group of people. this group does and, and they're just a phenomenal group of people. And so, I just want the public to remember that it is not the city that's funding the fireworks. It's, it is this group of volunteers who are going out and getting donations for those fireworks. And so, I just want to express my sincere thank you for hosting an event that other cities wish they had. And, and it's, it is a true showmanship of community and I just really appreciate being a part of it. The second thing that I would like to say is thank you to our Public Works Director for getting Camellia Avenue smooth as silk as we drive over it. It is definitely not the Indiana Jones adventure for Disneyland anymore. And I appreciate that so much, as do the other residents of District Two. Mr. Reed kind of stole my thunder with our local farmers and crafters market. I'm so excited for that to, to come into fruition. So happy that our Women's Club is going to be in partnership with Old Town Atwater. I think that shows what, what we can do as a community when we come together and work together. And so, I'm very, very excited for that. It's just another show of our community and, and what we have the ability to do. In June, actually on June 17th, I was able to meet with Jorge from the Health Collaborative. He brought with him a huge container, over 1,000 cigarette butts that they collected as a group at Osborne Park. And so, I would just like for us as a community to be mindful of that. If they were able to walk around and pick up over 1,000 cigarette butts, our children have the ability to walk around and pick up 1,000 cigarette butts and potentially put them in their mouths or anything else. When I asked Jorge what potentially we could do for them as a city, he did say that he didn't see any no-smoking signage in the city park. And so, if we could just potentially look into that particularly, well, in all of our parks, to make sure that we have significant signage, reminding individuals that they are not permitted to smoke in our city parks. I have utilized the text MyGov application. I find it to be very, very useful. I've been contacted by staff on every occasion that I've ever submitted any kind of concern and, and I think that that app is wonderful. I would encourage our community to use it. I can assure you that staff are responsive to it, which is very, very nice. And then finally, I have been walking up and down Schaefer Avenue recently and I'm very excited to share that our city is actively working with our traffic engineer to add potentially an additional crosswalk on Schaefer Avenue. And so, you know, it's very clear to me that traffic needs to slow down on Schaefer. I don't know who, if any of you have traveled on Schaefer Avenue recently, but I watched our, the radar speed sign for, you know, a few minutes. And I saw cars traveling 56 miles per hour in a 25 mile per hour zone. And so, I would agree that it's just a matter of time before something very unfortunate happens. I've had constituents express to me that they're worried to allow their children to walk to McDonald's, you know, from Manzanita. And, and that's, that's really unfortunate because I feel like we, in our community, we should feel okay about allowing our, our children who are old enough to be able to walk down to Starbucks or to McDonald's and not have to worry about them crossing the street. So, we all need to do our part and drive responsibly. I would ask for additional traffic enforcement on Schaefer Avenue, particularly in between Manzanita and Santa Fe. It has become a problem. And then the last thing that I would ask, too, is just for us to consider in adding the crosswalk on Schaefer Avenue. And it's primarily, I'd like to connect the walkers on Manzanita because those walkers are crossing over into the other neighborhood. But a rumble strip would be nice to kind of slow cars down before they're getting to those crosswalks, just as a reminder that they are approaching a crosswalk and they need to slow down. So, those are my comments and thank you very much.
All right. Brian?
Can I echo what they were saying? Jim, I suppose you hit the parade, that you guys did a fantastic job. I've told Linda the same. Chief Randall, I want to thank you for the Fourth of July Parade, allowing Jaden and Brielle Messer to ride and represent District Four for the parade. It's the first time that's happened for District Four. And hopefully, it's something we can keep going because this is about the kids and in the community. So, I really appreciate you allowing that. I also want to circle back to Cal Fire and thank Matt Bernard and crew. Poor guys had to show up and carry me out of my house on a tarp in my underwear. Nobody wants to see that. And they did it, they did it with a smile. So, thank you, guys.
I don't know how to follow up to that one. But I'm grateful that you're able to make it here tonight. I know you're in a lot of pain, but you're here and we appreciate that. I'm sure Chris is going to appreciate it when he gets his evaluation here shortly. I do want to thank code enforcement. It's been a long haul for Fifth and Grove. They kind of, they kind of solved their own problem eventually, but thank you for that. That's like the second one I know of, the one on High Street, High and Drakely, that was the first one. We have others in the city that need to be, hoarder houses that need to be abated. So, got to keep working that with the city attorney and administration and PD. So, but tell Daniel, please, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. The update from the City Manager.
Yes, thank you. We have, this month, Parks and Recreation is doing scavenger hunt runs all month long. So, it involves activities like searching, exploring, and discovering all of Atwater city parks. Kids can solve riddles, take pictures with the park signs. You can win prizes for kids, kids ages four through 12. Prizes can be redeemed during business hours at the Atwater Community Center. You can reach out to the Recreation Division to learn more. Also, we had Movies in the Park success. We had a great turnout at the last, at the latest ones, which showed Moana Two at Veterans Park. A huge shout out to our amazing partners at Dutch Bros, MID, Cal HOES, and Listos California. The next one's going to be on August 8th at Joan Fall Park and the movie will be Inside Out Two. And I just want to take a moment to thank our wonderful staff and our department heads, executive team, and our Assistant City Clerk and everybody for your help with this strategic plan. And thank the, the community as well for your feedback. But without all of us working together, we couldn't have done this. And I just want to give you my, my greatest thank you.
All righty. So, now we're on to closed session. Is there any public comment regarding closed session?
Last time tonight, I promise. Adam Reed. I know you guys are, I believe in closed session. You guys are reviewing Chris Holmes' evaluation as the City Manager. And I believe in giving credit where credit is due. And I think I've talked to just about every council member and come up here and talked to before and, and had criticism of some of the, the stuff that's happened. I would like to let everybody know that, you know, I don't, I don't know the internal dynamics of the city, but as a resident, it was really hard at first. As a resident and somebody who works on development projects, it was really hard. And it seems like some stuff inside the city has changed. And with that, I have seen a change in my interactions and meetings and progress on projects with Chris. So, I just want to let everybody know that. Because like I said, I think I've talked to every council member in the past year. So, I don't, I don't think it would be fair for you guys to go into your performance evaluation without me letting you know that, that, that things are getting, getting better and things are going in a very good direction, like I talked about before with John O'Connor. Same thing with Chris. You know, projects are starting to move, things are happening. I think that he, that he wants to see good things for the city. So, definitely, you know, just want to let you guys know. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just echo what Mr. Reed said. Sometimes I have, over the last year, gotten up here and been very blunt about comments that were made or think, decisions that were made. You stepped into a very difficult position, had a lot of things happen in one year. And so, I, I agree with what he said. I believe you have the best in mind for, for our city and do appreciate the last 12 months that you've put in.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. See, nobody else. We're going to close public comment. So, here's the... Never mind that. Okay. So, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Title City Manager. We are now going to adjourn to Conference Room A.